Evening and welcome to the February 5th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Wow, good crowd tonight. So, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Schmisher.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Protim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. Is Bradley Buck here for the invocation? Okay, let's rise then for the presidential allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is this the order of... Good, okay. So we have... The first name was Carl Martin. Would you approach the podium? Is Carl not here? Okay. John Zimmerman. John here?
Yeah, he is here.
Oh, there you are. On your podium, and let's have your name, and you're going to talk to us about the consent agenda.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Zimmerman. I'm a local resident up on top of Eight Mile Hill, and I see in your agenda this evening you want to make a letter to approve or be behind the highway project up on Highway 50, which we are not against actually, but we've been dealing with this since May the 3rd, when I got the notice from someone wanted to come on the property and survey and possibly basically condemn some buildings. I didn't sign it, and we requested a meeting from Andrew Strickland, and he was supposed to come down and meet with all of us, but he never did. So, I'm still waiting. I just want to talk to him and see what they have and plan. I'm not against the highway plan. I think we do need a safety plan up there. It is a dangerous highway, but I would like to know what their plan is. So that's basically all. All I'm here doing for me about.
And you have property adjacent to this project?
Yes. It actually connects to the project, at the very end of it, on the west end.
So this would be C.D.
Yes.
Would that be Mr. Nelson that would talk to them? Can we say that?
I would imagine Mr. Nelson would know who to talk to.
Okay. As I understand, we can get you the information from Mr. Nelson, who is the district for this area's engineer.
Okay.
And you have that discussion.
I know all the residents would like to get together and have a meeting with him. I had spoken about it with the residents back in May, and the ones I had spoken to were wanting to know what the plan involved, just so that before they signed away their rights. And I think that's just due diligence.
I agree with you. It's pretty heavy stuff. We'll try, we'll make that happen.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
And the next one, I don't know this lady at all, but Buffy McFadden. Hi, Buffy.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and to the council and the attorney, I don't know.
Cory.
Cory. Nice to meet you, Cory. My name is Buffy McFadden. Leanne Buffy McFadden, address 45605 US Highway 50 West, same residence as Mr. Zimmerman. Formally, we would like that item number C under the consent agenda pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion. As I recall, there were some strong feelings recorded in the daily record about how some council members felt about a project that may or may not occur on Fremont Drive, and that it seemed as if there was not entirely a lot of trust towards C.D. for this project, and almost a seeming of some helplessness of having any control over the project. Well, by pulling this off the consent agenda, and I think we should put our expectations of C.D. a little higher, that if they would like a letter from the city of Canyon City or Fremont County, that they should actually have conversation with the residents or businesses that are impacted in the area. Like John said, we're not necessarily against the project, but we seem it's within C.D.'s due diligence to actually speak to the public first before you get a go-ahead of, hey, we love this project from the city of Canyon City.
Okay. That would be up to council to pull that off on the consent agenda, right? Okay. So I guess...
Thank you.
I was led to believe that there wouldn't be any private property involved in that that would be working in their own area.
Mr. Mayor, that may be totally correct, but Mr. Zimmerman did point out that we were requested to sign a letter to allow C.D. to survey anywhere on our 40 acres on Eight Mile Hill, which probably was a boilerplate letter from C.D. that they normally send out to residents, but we feel that was rather excessive. I feel surveying the property that abuts the C.D. right of way would be appropriate. We've not received anything back, and like Mr. Zimmerman said, we did speak to the engineer on that project, invited them down la...
June.
June, June of last year, and we've not heard anything since. Just to let you know, we had this conversation also with the county manager today at Pueblo County, and hopefully he's wa... Or Pueblo County, sorry, Fremont County. Hopefully he's watching. I'm sorry, Tony Karoche used to live in Pueblo West, but by God, he's back in Canyon City.
By golly. Okay.
But, and like we said, we don't know that we're against the project, Mr. City Manager, but since there's been a lack of trust on an upcoming project, it seems that we should have the same level of due diligence going forward on this project.
Okay. Good, thank you. Thank both of you. Okay, we're at... I don't know if my glasses are on. Stephen Hamilton up to the podium. Stephen, you're talking about the 35 mile and the...
No, no, no. It's $35 million that the counties and the cities throughout Colorado have already spent on the immigrants, and now up in Denver, now they're asking for another $10.6 million. How's that going to affect us in our taxes here in these towns already when we're already suffering in certain things?
Well, that's a good question. Does anybody want to address that? I don't know what they would... We pay property tax and retail sales tax, and I guess the legislature would have to sort of tax us, if you will.
Well, they made room, and one of your big deals when you got on to as a mayor was to clean up the population with the homeless that was overflowing in Canyon. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And that was caused through Denver and Colorado Springs that would drop off the homeless here every three weeks in the month over at Home Depot or up the road from the police department. Then I was also noticing a couple other things that was really wrong in this town. You got the $35 million that every county and city has already donated towards the immigrants and everything. Then the State Department is asking $35 million, it's in the documents, and they're asking for another $10.6 million. How's that going to affect the people in each and every single county and city throughout Colorado? Is it going to raise our taxes on anything? That's a fair question.
Yeah, government doesn't sell anything at taxes. So if that is the case, then yeah, they probably will.
They tax us through the Rothschild banking system. Everything is set up through different standards, and anything denied against corporations that were founded underneath legit documents that go against the people, and you know they prosecute against people on certain topics.
Okay. Andrea, did you push your button?
No.
Amy, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I was just wondering, City Administrator Stevens, could you comment? Has the city of Canyon City provided any funding to the state regarding immigration or immigrants?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Me, Mr. Hamilton, maybe if it would be possible to get the documents that you're referring to, that would be really helpful to better understand and evaluate.
You want me to pull them up for you?
Sure, or perhaps you could send them to the city.
Not right now.
So that we could better understand, because I don't think any of us are aware of any funding.
Well, I'd like to set up a meeting, but it's harder than heck just to get a meeting with the mayor. That way I can talk over some things.
Why is that?
I came up to the office up front. They tell me you're not here. I ask, how do I get ahold of you? Is there a message I could leave? And they're like, no.
Yeah, you can call me. You can come to my office.
Okay.
Sure. I'm not hard. A lot of other people get ahold of me every day.
All of our contact information is on the web.
Yeah, email, everything. My phone number.
Well, I have several other topics, but I don't want to waste y'all's time. I was just concerned with the extra $10.6 million that they're asking for. Is it going to affect any of us through here? Are we going to have to pay more taxes into something like magically just pops up?
I suppose you would have to the state, but the city has no desire to do any added taxes or anything else.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure nothing's going to affect us here.
And you said some people are being dropped off in different parts?
Yeah, Home Depot.
Would you like to report them to our officers or to me?
Well, I reported it to the Sheriff's Department already.
Well, if it's in the county, it would be legitimate to share.
Yeah, and there's quite a few things that go on throughout the counties that I'm aware of, because I used to be a hotel manager property for maintenance, and I've seen a lot of stuff throughout our county that I'm not proud of.
Yeah, you can call me.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
All right. I just didn't, I didn't want to disturb the system, what was going on. I just had a simple question.
No, and I'm going to kind of reiterate what John said. All of our numbers are on the city website. You can contact any, I'm sure, any one of us if you wanted to just sit down and have a cup of coffee and do a discussion.
Oh, I'd love to. I'm new at this. I'm trying to tone it down a little bit, because this is all new. I signed up for District 2 for the senate seat here in Colorado, and my name's on the docket, by the way. My name is Stephen Taylor Hamilton, Sr., and I'll keep it down to a low tone, but I need to discuss certain matters that are going on throughout our state.
Emily, did you have something you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I think mostly it's been addressed. Just to be clear, we, I think if I understood you correctly, you said that every city and town in the state had contributed some rather large...
To something.
Well, I just wanted to be clear that that's not part of...
To Denver.
We have not done that.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
But the news article is saying that every town and city has.
Okay. So you now know that that's not true here.
That's all I gave you. I was a little upset when I heard about it.
Okay. So always come to the source. If you're reading something that doesn't make sense, then you're in the right place to get the correct information. So thank you for being here and asking your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? At this time then, I would like to... Oh, any comments from City Council before we move on? Amy? Oh, there you are.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I just wanted to flag for City Council and for the public that we have our next Red Canyon Trails meeting. It's actually up at Red Canyon this Wednesday from 3:30 to 4:30. It is open to the public. We'll do a short 15-minute kind of Q and A and update on where the conversations have gone and what we've accomplished since the last meeting, and then we'll walk a short portion of the proposed trail area so that folks can get a sense of what some of the views will be like up there. Again, meeting at 3:30 at the second set of restrooms, which is about 1.7 miles into the park. We are hopeful that we'll be able to bring something to council for council's consideration on February 19th, but we do have a couple more pieces that we need to work through before then. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Emily?
Mayor, thank you. I have three brief comments on three different topics, if that's okay. I wanted to just provide a brief update in regard to the Cotter Superfund site, just so that the public knows that there have been several leaks in the pump-back system in the last six months, I think three different leaks, relatively speaking, small leaks, but we're asking the regulators for more complete inspection of that pump-back system so that we're sure it's actually working as it's supposed to. I'll mention too that the state is issuing an RFP for operations at the site when the current contract with a contractor ends in April, and we have questions we hope to have addressed at the next community advisory group meeting regarding that RFP. I won't go into any more detail than that. Want to mention too that the Public Utilities Commission, which regulates gas and electric companies and regulates some other things, pipelines and towing companies, is, they're into a pretty comprehensive effort to look at equity issues in how they do business. I am on a committee of 15 people that's going to meet for a year in regard to that. They're also doing some of the things such as a, they did last week, a workshop for the public, although I have to say that most of the people attending that workshop work for the investor-owned utilities, so I'm not sure how valuable that was. And then I wanted to mention too that I, and I think maybe some others here, have met individually with the C.D. staffer, the State Department of Transportation staffer, who's talking with the city now about reviving the East Access Control Plan. What he emphasized to me in our conversation was that it's based on the city's plan called the US Highway 50 Corridor Plan, and so what I'm suggesting for all of us and for staff is that we don't get too far along on that East Access Control Plan until we look at our 2015 Corridor Plan, which is ours, as I understand it, and make sure that it still represents what we want to see out there. If C.D. is correct in saying that their work is based on our plan, then I want to make sure our plan still represents what we want. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Emily. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a general government meeting here Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. The discussion is going to be the CU Trails Economic Impact Study Presentation. There's also a Trails meeting, I believe, is that tomorrow?
Yes. Yes.
The Trails meeting also.
Sorry, Wednesday. The Red Canyon Trails meeting is Wednesday from 3:30 to 4:30.
Tomorrow's still Tuesday, right? 3:30 to 4:30. Thank you for that. And in addition, we have our slotted half hour for Carol in Wednesday morning, and so we're looking for volunteers who'd like to go.
What time does that happen?
8:30.
Tim? Okay. Thank you. So did I, Amy, did I understand you that the Wednesday meeting will be out at the park?
Yes, that's correct.
It won't be here?
It won't be here. It'll be up at Red Canyon Park from 3:30 to 4:30. We'll be meeting at the second set of restrooms, which is about 1.7 miles into the park.
Okay.
So we'll walk a little bit of the trail, and it'll be on Wednesday, 3:30 to 4:30.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
There's a real nice media release in regard to that. I printed it out. So hopefully there'll be a good crowd.
That would be on our website, the city's website. Right.
Yes, the media release, as well as some of the maps that actually show some of the viewpoints that we're considering having on that trail. So Christie and Steve and Rex have done an absolutely fantastic job getting the word out and also preparing the work for council's approval or council's consideration.
They should both be on the website and their social media.
Yeah, and if you haven't put your name or your email, to go to the city website and up on top on the left-hand side, it says email notifications. And I had a resident contact me about some closures and things like that, and he put his name in there, and then he went down to the menu, and he clicked on road closures and things of that nature, and so you automatically... I did it too, by the way, and I got an automatic where there was going to be a closure here or there, whatever. And so if you haven't gone on to the website, please do that. Go in and put in your email address, and you get a menu that you click on, you automatically get sent things like closures, the upcoming agendas and stuff like that that's going to go on with the city. So I think it's very useful. Anybody else? At this time, it gives me a lot of pleasure and excitement to ask our chief, Chief Schick, to come forward, and we're going to do a recognition of some police officers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to take an opportunity this evening to recognize some of our team members for the recent events that transpired January 7th of this year. I'm talking about that terrible pursuit that came into Canyon City chasing two homicide suspects in a stolen vehicle. So be for sure, our team was ready and responded appropriately. I do want to acknowledge that this was a robust law enforcement response from all of our community law enforcement, from Fremont County, Pueblo PD. We had Custer County Sheriff's Office folks with us. We had Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Everybody was committed to stopping this evil that came into our community. But I do want to recognize our first responders and the shift that was working that day as they had just moments to prepare before this event ended up in the middle of our city, and the actions that they took immediately thereafter that not only led to their capture some six or seven hours later, but also to establishing a very secure perimeter that was able to prevent any harm from coming from our citizens that lived in those neighboring communities. So I just want to read this memo here that talks about the event. This memorandum is intended to recognize Sergeant Ryan Belding and his shift for their service excellence related to a tense and rapidly evolving situation involving a high-speed pursuit of two homicide suspects. At this time, I'd ask Sergeant Belding and Corporal Snyder and Officer Bodycomb and Officer Gordon to come up. As I said, on January 7th, Sergeant Belding, Corporal Snyder, Officer Bodycomb, and Officer Michael Gordon assisted the Pueblo Police Department in pursuit of a possible homicide suspect. Due to the vehicle's high rate of speed, there wasn't much time to formulate a plan before the vehicle entered our city limits, literally minutes. The team watched each other's backs while trying to deploy stop sticks on our highway out here to try and deter the vehicle from entering the city. Unsuccessful because of the speeds involved, the pursuit continued. The rapidly evolving event was significant concerns of violence due to charges and suspicions they were being pursued for, and despite the seriousness and significance of the volatile situation, they maintained a very calm and professional composure throughout the entire event. Once the vehicle crashed with split-second thinking, they strategically flooded the entire area surrounding where the vehicle landed, establishing a solid perimeter to try and ensure our community was safe. This greatly limited the suspect's movements and likely prevented any of our citizens in the surrounding neighborhoods from becoming victims of these suspects' volatile and reckless behavior. Their collective actions were critical to the containment and later capture of both of these dangerous felony suspects. Because of their teamwork, quick and response and reasonable thinking, and a what's important now mindset, I'd like to award them before you tonight the chief's commendation.
Thank you, gentlemen. Would you like to go down front and take pictures with all of us? Would that be wonderful? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add something on this topic?
Yes, please. Emily, go ahead.
Chief Schick, I wanted to make a comment.
Chief Schick?
I don't know if he heard me. I would like to make a comment, Chief Schick, when you're not tied up there.
Chief Schick is... Chief.
Under the topic of recognition and the Canyon City Police Department, I just wanted to draw everyone's attention. If you're on Facebook, Chief Schick wrote a really wonderful thing on the Canyon City Police Department Facebook page the other day in honor of Black History Month, which is February, in honor of our black officers, and I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. It was really nicely written, and I, for one, appreciated that.
Every word of it. I really appreciate those guys.
Yeah, and we do too. Thank you.
Yes, we do too. All our citizens do, by the way. So, all right. Well, that was great. We're to the consent agenda, and I... Do you...
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I overlooked the administrator's report. No?
Did you want me to read the consent agenda, sir?
Yes.
Yes, go right ahead.
All right.
This is only my second meeting. Come on.
Mayor, Mayor, I have a question.
Andrea.
Do you need a motion to withdraw 8C now, or do you need it later?
After I read the...
After you read it?
Okay. Let's just... Emily?
I'm fine for now.
You're reserving your comments. Yes, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the January 16th Regular City Council Meeting, the January 17th Vision Committee Meeting, and special meetings on January 8th, January 16th, January 19th, and January 22nd. 8B reappoints Tim Dennehy to the Trails Use Policy Committee. 8C authorizes the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Colorado Department of Transportation for the US 50 Reconstruction and Safety Project west of Canyon City. 8D authorizes the city administrator to sign a funding agreement with Fremont Center for the Arts for 2024. 8E authorizes the city administrator to sign a funding agreement with the Golden Age Center for 2024. 8F authorizes the city administrator to sign a funding agreement with the Rural Gorge Chamber Alliance for 2024. 8G authorizes the city administrator to sign the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Swimming Pool Feasibility Study. 8H awards bid 2024 annual water meter and register purchase to Core and Main in an amount not to exceed $100,000. 8I awards bid 2624 engineering work truck to Daniel Long Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $41,299. 8J awards bid to Creative Crosswalk Supply and Installation to Harmonic Media, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $21,540. 8K authorizes the purchase of equipment for Project Lifesaver, and 8L is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additions, corrections, or suggestions? Go ahead, Andrea.
Mayor Troutman, I would like to make a motion to withdraw 8C until we can get C.D. to have some conversation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Just a general comment that I have. I wasn't there for the meeting that you just mentioned that Councilwoman Worthington and Councilman Hammack were attending. But I guess what concerns me, I mean, we had the discussion at that previous council meeting, and with my background and training in negotiation skills and so forth, it feels like this is becoming a positional disagreement when really, in my opinion, the focus should be on what are the goals? And if the goal, I remember hearing business people, for example, talk about the goal of making sure people could find their business and know if they're open or not, things like that. And I, it just feels to me like what I'm hearing tonight, that there's this pullback that's very positional rather than focused on the interests of meeting collective goals. So I, I just have that general comment to make, that as further discussions occur, that I hope all of us here, business owners, anyone involved in the discussion can stay focused on what the goals of signage are rather than stepping back and digging in heels about, "We have to have feather flags because that's the only way to meet our goal." So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Should we move into the public hearing? Okay. We have a, I'm going to open a public hearing and invite the city administrator for a report.
Actually, I will turn this over to our city clerk, Cindy Foster Owens, to give a report for a liquor license hearing.
Everything was turned into the city clerk's office. It has been turned into the state. Unfortunately, I have not heard back from them yet. They are a little backed up at the moment, and I tried to get a report from them today, and I have not heard back from them. Everything was complete, filled out, turned in. We, I, in your packet was also the petitions that were turned in, and on our side, we are ready to go once we hear from the state and your approval.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Is the liquor license for the Whitewater Rooftop Social LLC, would you please give us your name? We'll give it back to you, by the way, but...
Correct. My name is Christopher Wally. I'm the regional manager for Whitewater Rooftop Social. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name's Tanner Cypher. I'm the general manager at the Rooftop Social.
And my name is Trey Silverman, resident here for 26 years, and I am the CFO for Rooftop Social.
Okay, you don't look that old. Just kidding. Okay. Go right ahead, Mr. Wally. Or whoever would like to speak, or...
Yeah. So basically, for anyone who doesn't know, 302 Royal Gorge Boulevard, very close to here, actually, the new black and white building. For anyone who is curious, we are building off of the Whitewater brand that everyone knows and trusts up on an eight-mile hill, the Whitewater Bar and Grill, branching out with a new location, new company that we're branding as the Rooftop Social. We're going to emphasize small plates and a really unique dining atmosphere with a beautiful rooftop patio. Our vision for that is, as I mentioned, small plates in a really social atmosphere. A great place for community members to go and have a quick snack and a, and a drink and meet with one another, and a so, social atmosphere that encourages guests to start in the patio area, work your way up, take in all the views in the local parks in the surrounding areas, so.
Okay. Anyone else in the group?
Yeah, we're trying to just reinvest back into the community. We've worked here, I've been in the restaurant industry for 15 years for my life, 10 up at the Whitewater Bar and Grill, working and managing. We've 500 employees of local staff throughout the last decade of my employment. We donate 1% to the Trails up there at Whitewater Bar and Grill, so hopefully we can keep that outdoor industry thriving. We love keeping that going, and other than that, yeah, that's our goal, to keep investing in this community.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council? Amy?
Thank you. I had sent Clerk Foster Owens a few questions in advance and was advised that I should also read them into the record. So I will do so. I had asked if the building is fully permitted by the city and state, and she had noted that it doesn't have a certificate of occupancy yet, but that the liquor license is typically applied for quite a bit prior to. But I was wondering if you could give us an update on when you actually expect to have that CO and open, and when we can start enjoying those small plates with the beautiful atmosphere.
Yep, I can help answer that. So we are hopefully looking here pretty soon. We're working with the city, as you very well know. And we just have a few finishing items with the fire system. They're just waiting on some more tests and some few finishing touches. And then once we get pavement, I think we're finishing with some pavement out front, and then a few other finishing touches, and we're very close.
Great. The other questions I had asked, the city has had some dealings with the property owner, who I believe is Mr. Ty Cypher, but he wasn't listed anywhere on the application. I'm assuming that's because he's not an owner of the business or on the liquor license?
Yep, so we are leasing the building from the Rover Drafting, which is the property owner, and Ty Cypher is one of the members of that. Yep, and so that is our plan. We're just going to set up a lease. We have a lease set up already in agreement with him, and that is our goal, once we get approved with everything, to go through that lease.
Thank you. And again, sorry, I sent these questions via email, so do have to read them into the record. The next two were about the application itself. It, it seemed a little odd to me, the answer to number 14, given the relationship with Whitewater Bar and Grill, that, that there aren't any other liquor licenses that have been applied for or are managed by those who are involved with the Whitewater Social. Could you speak a little bit more to, to that?
Yeah, so as businesses evolve and everything like that, we're actually looking forward to a new future in all of our careers and, and ownership inside of the company. As we all discussed as a team, we felt it was beneficial to have us separate that entity from the White. We want to build the brand, however, this is a separate business, a separate LLC, and it will be operated in accordance and, and a lot of the same guidelines and everything like that. But this is our initial attempt to, to differentiate from some of the other businesses and create something on our own that we're moving forward with without the previous owners.
Think back to that, yeah, we didn't have ownership in Whitewater Bar and Grill, so that kind of answered that for us, that as, as a, the four of us owners didn't really have a tie to the other liquor license, if that made sense.
Seems like the people that do come and approach me or that I've run into downtown are the ones that are in favor of the feather flags. So, I would say I'm about eighty percent in favor, twenty percent completely against having them at this point, but I do need a larger sample, which I am working on.
Thank you so much. I know that there are a lot of businesses and that is a massive undertaking, so appreciate your willingness to do that.
It takes a while to visit every business downtown.
Okay. Shall we move on?
I would like to hear from City Administrator Stevens about what next steps there could be before we have this joint meeting with Planning Commission and City Council, because I would hate for a plan to be presented to us that doesn't have the support of the local businesses, because I think the direction that Council provided on January third was to come up with a creative solution that both meets the city's needs and also takes into account the local businesses in our downtown district and what their needs are and how they would like to move forward.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to comment on?
You know, we had the meeting. I know Mayor Pro Tim Hammack and Councilmember Worthington were there. I thought it was collaborative. We, you know, we didn't have any objection to what was presented. So, you know, it's just concerning to hear that there are concerns.
And were, if I may ask a question?
Go ahead.
Were the concerns expressed by people that were at the meeting?
Yes.
Really?
So, there was concern expressed by some that it was essentially a rehash of the meeting that was had last fall where the city was again just proposing alternatives to feather flags and making it very clear that feather flags were never going to happen. And then the other concern that was expressed was, no, maybe some of these alternatives would work, but they want to, they think that those are probably a long time down the road, and they would want to make sure that they had an opportunity to really understand what those alternatives looked like in much greater detail, and that the moratorium on feather flags would continue until those alternatives were actually in place.
And the, having participated in the meeting, it was, it was, there were only three people there from the business community. Having participated in the meeting, it was my understanding that the moratorium would continue in place while we further discuss the issues. I thought that was clear, and it's a little bit disappointing perhaps that others thought it was not so clear.
Okay, so the moratorium will stay in place. There are no decisions made on that yet, and I suppose that we'll reconvene at some period of time to discuss feather flags again.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am. You're all right, hey.
Thank you. Just a general comment that I have. I wasn't there for the meeting that you just mentioned that Councilwoman Worthington and Councilman Hammack were attending, but I guess what concerns me, and we had the discussion at that previous council meeting, and with my background and training in negotiation skills and so forth, it feels like this is becoming a positional disagreement when really, in my opinion, the focus should be on what are the goals. And if the goal, I remember hearing business people, for example, talk about the goal of making sure people could find their business and know if they're open or not, things like that. And it just feels to me like what I'm hearing tonight, that there's this pullback that's very positional rather than focused on the interests of meeting collective goals. So, I just have that general comment to make that as further discussions occur, that I hope all of us here, business owners, anyone involved in the discussion can stay focused on what the goals of signage are rather than stepping back and digging in heels about, we have to have feather flags because that's the only way to meet our goal. So, I'll stop there.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Shall we move into the public hearing? Okay. We have a, they're going to open a public hearing and invite the city administrator for a report.
Actually, I will turn this over to our city clerk, Cindy Foster Owens, to give a report for a liquor license hearing.
Everything was turned into the city clerk's office. It has been turned into the state. Unfortunately, I have not heard back from them yet. They are a little backed up at the moment, and I tried to get a report from them today, and I have not heard back from them. Everything was complete, filled out, turned in. In your packet was also the petitions that were turned in, and on our side, we are ready to go once we hear from the state and your approval.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Is the liquor license for the Whitewater Rooftop Social LLC, would you please give us your name? We'll give it back to you, by the way, but...
Correct. My name is Christopher Wally. I'm the regional manager for Whitewater Rooftop Social. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name's Tanner Cypher. I'm the general manager at the Rooftop Social.
And my name is Trey Silverman, resident here for 26 years, and I am the CFO for Rooftop Social.
Okay. You don't look that old. Just kidding. Okay. Go right ahead, Mr. Wally. Or whoever would like to speak, or...
Yeah. So, basically, for anyone who doesn't know, 302 Royal Gorge Boulevard, very close to here, actually, the new black and white building. For anyone who is curious, we are building off of the Whitewater brand that everyone knows and trusts up on an eight-mile hill, the Whitewater Bar and Grill, branching out with a new location, new company that we're branding as the Rooftop Social. We're going to emphasize small plates and a really unique dining atmosphere with a beautiful rooftop patio. Our vision for that is, as I mentioned, small plates in a really social atmosphere. A great place for community members to go and have a quick snack and a drink and meet with one another, and a social atmosphere that encourages guests to start in the patio area, work your way up, take in all the views in the local parks in the surrounding areas, so.
Okay. Anyone else in the group?
Yeah, we're trying to just reinvest back into the community. We've worked here, I've been in the restaurant industry for 15 years for my life, 10 up at the Whitewater Bar and Grill, working and managing. We've 500 employees of local staff throughout the last decade of my employment. We donate 1% to the trails up there at Whitewater Bar and Grill, so hopefully we can keep that outdoor industry thriving. We love keeping that going, and other than that, yeah, that's our goal, to keep investing in this community.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from Council? Any?
Thank you. I had sent Clerk Foster Owens a few questions in advance and was advised that I should also read them into the record, so I will do so. I had asked if the building is fully permitted by the city and state, and she had noted that it doesn't have a certificate of occupancy yet, but that the liquor license is typically applied for quite a bit prior to. But I was wondering if you could give us an update on when you actually expect to have that CO and open, and when we can start enjoying those small plates with the beautiful atmosphere.
Yep, I can help answer that. So, we are hopefully looking here pretty soon. We're working with the city, as you very well know, and we just have a few finishing items with the fire system. They're just waiting on some more tests and some few finishing touches. And then, once we get pavement, I think we're finishing with some pavement out front and then a few other finishing touches, and we're very close.
Great. The other questions I had asked, the city has had some dealings with the property owner, who I believe is Mr. Ty Cypher, but he wasn't listed anywhere on the application. I'm assuming that's because he's not an owner of the business or on the liquor license?
Yep, so we are leasing the building from the Rover Drafting, which is the property owner, and Ty Cypher is one of the members of that. Yep, and so that is our plan. We're just going to set up a lease. We have a lease set up already in agreement with him, and that is our goal, once we get approved with everything, to go through that lease.
Thank you. And again, sorry, I sent these questions via email, so do have to read them into the record. The next two were about the application itself. It seemed a little odd to me, the answer to number 14, given the relationship with Whitewater Bar and Grill, that there aren't any other liquor licenses that have been applied for or are managed by those who are involved with the Whitewater Social. Could you speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, so as businesses evolve and everything like that, we're actually looking forward to a new future in all of our careers and ownership inside of the company. As we all discussed as a team, we felt it was beneficial to have us separate that entity from the White. We want to build the brand. However, this is a separate business, a separate LLC, and it will be operated in accordance and a lot of the same guidelines and everything like that, but this is our initial attempt to differentiate from some of the other businesses and create something on our own that we're moving forward with without the previous owners.
Think back to that, yeah, we didn't have ownership in Whitewater Bar and Grill, so that kind of answered that for us, that as the four of us owners didn't really have a tie to the other liquor license, if that made sense when it came to that.
Yes, thank you. That really does help clarify. And then, the last question I had previously asked was with regard to number 24, which states that if the answer is yes, which in this case it is, that you need to provide the name, type of license, and account number. The question was, does this manager act as a manager of or have a financial interest in any other liquor-licensed establishment in the state of Colorado? But I don't think that that further detail was actually provided in your application, so I just wanted to ask about that particularly since the state has not yet ruled on this. Thanks.
And on that question, I'm assuming we're probably going to get a question from the state that says, hey, we're missing a little bit of information.
That was just a little, we're trying to figure that out. Yeah, we didn't know what they were needing and where that was kind of lied in there.
Are you currently managing any of the other licenses that have, are you currently listed as the manager on any of the other liquor licenses?
Technically, no.
Then you wouldn't need to put anything in there, so we'll have to change that question to no.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I would call for a motion in a second, hopefully. I would call for a motion in a second. Did I?
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious, do we have to wait on anything from the state before we recommend approval?
Okay. Emily?
Sorry, they did a concurrent review, so they can be done at the same time.
Gotcha.
Okay. Emily?
Thanks. I move that we approve the new liquor license for Whitewater Rooftop Social LLC operating at 302 Royal Gorge Boulevard as requested.
I second.
Second, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on that, I'm going to, that's the property at 700 Macon, right?
700 Macon, yes, sir.
I'm going to have to request that I recuse myself from this, because my company sold that property. So, I think I shouldn't be part of that discussion, all right? So, I'm going to go into the anteroom there, and when you're done, you can come and get me. So, I'm going to leave and turn it over to Mr. Hammack, okay?
This is, this part of our meeting is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution Four Series 2024 entitled, "The Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Special Review Use Regarding a Multifamily Residential Use in the Central Business District." I'd like to open this public hearing, and I'd like to invite the city administrator to give us a report.
And we will have a staff report from Patrick Mulready, the city planner.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, as you know, the next three items on your agenda are all public hearings, all involving special review uses, which means the analysis that went into each of them was the same, and the presentation, the formatting of the presentation, is going to be largely the same. So, I would like to apologize in advance if, by the time we get to the third public hearing, this begins to sound a bit redundant. I'm sorry. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This evening, we are here to consider a request by applicant BBLCI Properties for approval to locate multifamily residential as the principal use of a property within the CB Central Business District Zone. Although above-ground floor residential is a permitted use within the CB Zone District, multifamily residential as the principal use of the property requires a special review use approval. Subject property is a 5,435-square-foot parcel located at the southeast corner of Seventh Street and Macon Avenue, just one block north of Main. As it is within the CB Central Business District zoning that characterizes downtown Canyon City, it is surrounded by commercial office, event venues, government offices, and religious uses. The property was part of the original incorporation of Canyon City in 1872. The site contains one building with two above-ground levels and a basement enclosing approximately 2,300 square feet. Its construction dates from 1933. Historically, it was used as a doctor's office with residents above the ground floor. Although the type of office on the ground floor has changed over time, the above-ground floor space has consistently been used as a residence, whether associated with the ground floor business or not. In the Central Business District, or as this property is zoned CB Central Business District, multifamily dwelling comma building, meaning multiple residences within the same building, is designated as a special review use, which requires public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. Special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 of the UDC as a type of discretionary use under zoning in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding land use areas and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these conflicts, or if the conflicts are too significant, the use can be denied as part of a public hearing. The reason multifamily dwelling comma building is categorized as a special review use is how it is defined in Section 1702-030 of the Unified Development Code. The CB District is intended to foster the continued economic vitality Canyon City's historic downtown and to provide and preserve a central setting for pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development as well as cultural amenities. The way the CB Zone District is written, the intent is to allow uses at the ground level which activate the street level or pedestrian area. This is why typically you see restaurants, nightclubs, and retail on the ground floor with residential above. Therefore, the analysis of this particular special review use involves one of compatibility with surrounding land uses. The analysis for any special review use is found in Section 1710-030B of the Unified Development Code and includes three criteria: Complacency generally with the requirements of Chapter 1710; Consistency with the purpose of the Unified Development Code; and that the use can be found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area where the use is to be situated. Now, Section Three of the staff report, which is included in your agenda packet, summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of each of these criteria. It is important to note that the surrounding land uses, which include general, medical, and government offices, an event venue, and a church, as well as the site's location, a block removed from Main Street and parking. The applicant has provided a graphic indicating that they believe they can accommodate up to nine parking spaces on-site for potentially six dwelling units if they proceed with converting the basement into two apartment units. Otherwise, it would be six parking spaces for four above-ground floor dwelling units that they propose to construct entirely on-site. As an option, the applicant can also pay the city an in-lud fee for each parking space they fall short, short of in the required minimum to satisfy the parking requirement. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses, and this proposal can be considered for approval at this location. And with that, as of the 22nd of January 2024, staff has received no phone call, mail, or email concerning this proposal from any member of the public. Public notice requirements concerning this public hearing before Planning Commission and City Council have been met in the timeframe required by the UDC, and the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter the evening of January 24th, 2024, and forwarded a recommendation that is summarized below. Staff and the Planning Commission recognize that city, recommend that city council approve the use by special review request to allow multifamily residential as the principal use of the property at 700 Macon Avenue with the adoption of Resolution Four Series of 2024. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project, Mr. Brendan Herrera of BBLCI.
Thank you. Do we have any city council member questions for our staff? You're going to have to raise your hands. I don't have the box.
Sorry. No worries. I do have questions, but they might be answered by Mr. Herrera's presentation.
Okay. Then, would you be willing to, the applicant be willing to come up and talk to us, please?
Hello, my name is actually Christian Herrera, sorry, the edit there, of BBLCI Properties, and the project manager and partial owner. Yeah, happy to answer any questions.
And did you have, did you have any comments on the proposal or anything to add to the staff presentation?
Nothing to add, really. We do have maybe an edit that's going to be coming up here shortly. We've been looking at different designs for the house and the interior. Our initial goal was to get to six units, but I think it's going to be five units. It'll be four one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit between the two levels. Yeah, that's the only update that I have beyond what has been presented to you so far.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack. My questions had to do mostly with the staff recommendation provided by our Director of Public Works, Mr. Evans, and I just wanted to get a sense from you as to whether you had taken that into account already in consideration of your plans, specifically with regard to the driveway configuration, whether that would be widened, how that might affect on-street parking, and what that looked like. And then I also was curious as to whether you were planning to use a payment in lieu of scenario, or if you did think you would have sufficient on-site parking for the number of units provided. Thank you.
Sure, councilwoman. So, we, for your first question for the driveway and the space needed to accommodate the parking spots, with us moving down to five units, that would bring our total recommend, or total required to, I believe, eight spots, if that's correct. We believe that we'll be able to accommodate most of those in a diagonal-type parking going along through there. The one thing that I think that you're kind of, that you're asking me is if we're going to have to widen the access in order to access the driveway from either Main, I'm sorry, Seventh or Macon. As of right now, I don't think that we're going to need to. I'm able to drive my vehicle in there, which is a Ram 2500, so it gets that in there. However, once we go to building permit and apply that way, they may make a recommendation or have additional comment on how wide we need to, and that may kind of force us to do that. So, if that is the case, then that could require us to widen that access area into our parking, or proposed parking area that way. Now, I don't know how that'll affect parking per se. I was looking at the image that's provided to you as well, and it's showing that those two parallel parking spaces right there on Seventh. I'm hoping that we'll be able to widen it without having to encroach on those at all and not take away from any of the city's current parking spaces that way. In the case, I'm sorry, in your second question with the grudge to the payment in lieu of, we are looking to utilize that if we're not able to accommodate those parking spaces. But with the spacing that we have next to the house, we feel like we'll be able to accommodate the eight that we'll need to be within the limits.
Okay. So, you're aware of the potential that you may need to widen the driveway and would be prepared to do so?
Yes, we are. We absolutely are. We looked at Mr. Evans' comments and prepared for that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. I pushed my button, forgetting that you don't have that. Kind of related to Councilwoman Schmisher's question, there was something in the staff report that we reviewed related to whether you have agreements with a neighboring property owner or not, or whether there's a question about whether you had sufficient spaces. Is there anything further you can say on that?
Sure. So, the property owner would be, that we would need to encroach on without with getting into our space, would be the old print shop that I believe is now vacant. We have not made those discussions because we're not quite sure what we're going to need to do. We kind of want to cross that bridge once we get there and get more information from the city, as long as we pass through this and then start to apply for permits. We're more than happy to go ahead and do that, but we haven't had to do it as of yet.
And then, I had another question. I think there was something in the written material we reviewed that suggests your plan is to keep the exterior appearance pretty much the same. Is there anything you can say about that?
Sure. No, the only changes we're going to make are whatever we're required to by the building department. So, the, if you are familiar with the exterior of that building, it's a beautiful Tudor-style home. So, we would like to maintain that look to keep with, you know, the current look of the neighborhood, and really, we have no reason to change it. It's a really beautiful building, so we have no plans to. The one thing that was also noted in that packet is that we may have to change a few of the walkways in order to accommodate for ADA. We're also ready to do that, but we don't think that it's going to have a significant impact on the aesthetic of the building as of now.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from council?
I just had one additional, Chair, or I was about to call you Chairman Maloney from the Planning Commission. Councilmember Maloney, as our council rep to Planning Commission, I'm not sure if you were able to attend and able to give more of a flavor of the conversation that occurred at Planning Commission. And Attorney Huffman, is that the most appropriate way to, like, get a better understanding of what occurred at Planning Commission on this one?
Planning Commission actually just speaks through its recommendation. This is a new public hearing, so actually Chair Maloney is the only one that should have the benefit of the public hearing of the Planning Commission, then you get the recommendation.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was there, but I can't. I mean, yeah, this is a separate discussion.
Understood.
And I just love that I get to hear Patrick's presentation twice, every time.
So, the, if I could, I'd like to ask that question perhaps in a different way. The, there is, since the Planning Commission holds a public hearing, there is a record upon which their decision is based. And my question is, is there some way that this body can look further or deeper into that record to see what questions the planning commissioners had and what answers there were to questions?
The way, the way I think you could ask an appropriate question is, did the Planning Commission identify any concerns or something to that effect, but not, but again, because this is a separate public hearing record, you rely on what the Planning Commission heard at their public hearing that generated their recommendation. But you can certainly ask if there were any concerns raised by the Planning Commission.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Maloney, were there any concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission?
If I, if I may, I think, I think the question is more appropriately directed to our staff representative, Patrick Mulready, rather than the Planning Commission chair.
Agreed.
And the reason for that is because as one of the deciders, one of the judicial, semi-judicial triers of fact, so to speak, in that case, it's better that he not speak on this issue, but our staff can answer the question, where are the concerns raised, and what were they, and how were they resolved?
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm not a voting member on Planning Commission. I'm just the council representative, so I didn't have any say-so in their decision.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
But looking at the puzzled look on your face, it's also that he's authorized to be at that hearing while you are not.
No, I understand that. My puzzlement is, since he is not acting in a quasi-judicial capacity during Planning Commission, I'm unclear as to why it would be better directed to, not Director Maloney, I'm sorry, Director Mulready, rather than, but it makes no difference to me. I can ask you this offline. Were there any concerns that came up during Planning Commission?
No, ma'am. Planning Commission's questions were of the variety of market rate for the units, that sort of thing. There was one question from the public that came up about whether these were going to be subsidized, government-subsidized units. And the applicant was there to answer that question, no, these are not going to be government-subsidized units. And with that, Planning Commission was ready to move forward with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Herrera.
Thank you.
And do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And we have the question in front of us, council, do I have a motion? front of us, council. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. Oh, you can't see the box. I'm sorry.
I can't.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution for Series of 2024.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye. And with that, oh, our city administrator has gone to retrieve a member of our body. So we'll take a short pause here while that is happening. Mr. Mayor, I gladly turn over the chair of the committee back to you.
Thank you. Okay. We are at, at C, right. Introduction and adoption, give me glasses on here, if it helps. It's an age thing. Introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 5, Series 2024, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Special Review Use Regarding a Permanent Outdoor Storage Use in the G.C. General Commercial District." I now open the public hearing and invite the administrator, or Patrick, to, Patrick, would you go forward?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening, we are here to consider a request by applicant Walmart for approval to locate a permanent outdoor storage location as an accessory use to the, of the property within the G.C. General Commercial Zone District. Even though this is considered an accessory use to the principal retail function of Walmart, under the city's land use code in the G.C. General Commercial Zone District, this is considered a special review use. Walmart is the biggest single commercial property in Canyon City with a lot that encompasses 16.2 acres in area. It can be accessed from two full-movement intersections along Dozier Avenue, a full-movement intersection on Fremont Drive shared with Peerless Tire, and a full-movement intersection off Berry Parkway to the east. To the east and south, Walmart is bordered by commercial uses within the same G.C. General Commercial zoning. However, areas to the west and north are in unincorporated Fremont County. To the west are two residential areas, HDR, High Density Residential, comprising the Country Green Apartments, and AS Agricultural Suburban comprising the Glenmore Estates Neighborhood. To the north is a Business Park Zoned B Business District, and a field also zoned AS and currently used as pastureland. The Walmart property was annexed in 1986, and construction on the, the building dates from 1999. The building itself is approximately 181,210 square feet, and as is typical for big-box retailers, the site is overparked, exceeding the park, the parking minimums for the city. The reason for the request stems from the city's observation that during the pandemic in 2020 and 2021, Walmart was storing intermodal shipping containers along the south side of the building, visible from Highway 50. Staff approached Walmart about finding a potentially better location for these containers, the number of which will vary seasonably depending upon promotions happening within the store. Although permanent, permitted within the I Industrial District, permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use is classified as a special review use within the G.C. General Commercial District. Special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 of the Unified Development Code as a type of discretionary use under zoning, in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding land uses, and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these conflicts, or if the conflicts are too significant, the use can be denied as part of a public hearing. The reason permanent outdoor storage is categorized as a special review use within the G.C. Zone District is because general commercial uses can be surrounded by a wide variety of other types of uses. Thus, the scale, location, and screening associated with permanent outdoor storage and how it may impact those surrounding uses becomes a critical point of the analysis. Section 17.05.140 references criteria outdoor storage units must meet, particularly where they abut any kind of residentially or lesser-intensity commercially-zoned areas. These areas include hard surfacing and methods of screening the site and location for which area, the area intended to minimize the visibility of such storage units. Thus, in meeting these criteria, the applicant must also demonstrate that the proposed yard will not adversely affect surrounding land uses. Now, to recap a bit from what you heard previously, the analysis for any special review use is found in Section 1710-030B of the Unified Development Code and includes three criteria: Compliance generally with the requirements of Chapter 1710, consistency with the purposes of the UDC, and a finding that the use can be found compatible with surrounding land uses and that the area where the use is to be situated. Section 3 of the staff report summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of each of these criteria. Note that the applicant responded to staff's suggestion that the out, the location of the outdoor area would best be, would be best if moved as far away from the Highway 50 corridor as possible. The location they have selected would be north of the, the shared lot line with the AutoNation dealership. This location has the added advantage of minimizing its visibility from the residential areas west of Dozier Avenue, and in fact, would border what is presently used as pastureland to the north. It should also be noted that the applicant has agreed to this screen, to screen this area, and to address Public Works' concerns regarding developing a plan to address any illicit discharges, and demonstrate how placement of shipping containers will not affect overall site drainage, and to adhere to the fire district's request to have the containers which contain any hazardous materials appropriately labeled. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses, and this proposal can be considered for approval at this location. With that, again, as of January 22nd, 2024, staff has received no phone call, mail, or email concerning this proposal, although we did have people come before Planning Commission the night of the public hearing. Public notice requirements concerning the public hearing before Planning Commission and City Council have been met in the timeframe required by the UDC. The Planning Condition conducted their public hearing on this matter the, the night of January 24th, 2024, and have forwarded a recommendation that was some, that is summarized herein. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that council approve the use by special review request to allow permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use of the property at 3105 East US Highway 50, subject to the three conditions contained in staff's report with the adoption of Resolution 5, Series of 2024. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is Lynn Ross, manager of the local Walmart, and attorney Elizabeth Field of the law firm Kutaq Rock, who helped process this application.
Would you like to, the represents, would you like to talk, or have any comments? Come forward and please, simple for a public hearing?
Hi, I'm Lynn Ross, store manager of the Walmart. I just know that if you guys went through and approved this, it would help us greatly. Working with Patrick, I know it was unsightly during the COVID pandemic, what we had going on with all the shipping containers that were stuck at sea and came at one time. So, moving forward with this, it will keep it away from Highway 50, and it's actually easier for us, too, as they're all together in one area, and we can operate more efficiently during the high seasons.
Okay. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Are there any questions of the applicant from council? John?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. The, or at least of staff, perhaps. Were there any concerns expressed in the public hearing on this previously?
So we did have residents of the Sunrise Mesa neighborhood, which is on the hill that kind of looks down upon this site, who I don't believe understood the concept of what the permanent outdoor storage entailed, because their questions concerned things like what's going to be an increase in lighting, how much additional traffic is this going to generate, and it had to be explained that this will not change anything with respect to the nature of how the site is laid out, how the site is lit, how the site is circulated through. What this does is locate a space in the parking lot where they will put a screening wall, and as they have intermodal shipping containers come in, that's where they'll be located, and that will be the only change that will be perceptible from this. Once that was made clear, Planning Commission was, they were, they were satisfied that those concerns were addressed, and they moved forward with their recommendation.
Thank you, Patrick. One more?
Yes, maybe a couple.
You're limited to two, that's it. No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, the, in, in terms of exactly where the containers will be placed, we have a general site map here in front of us. Is, are the, are there, are there, is there further permitting work or permissions needed from the city for them to start placing containers?
We will, they, they will be required to obtain a fence permit as a standard in any commercial land use area where they wish to put in a fence, and we will ask that the fence, you know, be architecturally integrated to look like the building. We have also asked that they provide our fire district with assurances that, to the extent they have any shipping containers come in that might be labeled as hazardous materials, those will be properly identified per national requirements for such a thing. And of course, our Public Works Department has asked that a program be put in place that could, you know, interrupt and catch any illicit discharges that happen, and they have agreed to do that as well. So that will all happen during the permitting phase.
Okay. The, if they, the, from what I understood of the, of the map that we had in front of us, they're proposing 40 containers there to the north of their shared boundary with the auto dealer.
Correct.
There, there does not appear to be enough room within that designated area for 40 containers. And so that's what, part of where I, where this question is, is when exactly will the layout of the containers, will that be further approved by the city, or is that just up to them? If, once the SRU is approved, if they're in the general area, is that good enough, or will there be actual boundaries that have to be observed?
Well, their fence permit will dictate where they put the screening wall around, and that will define the space. So, yes, as part of the permitting, they will specifically locate that as the area to be screened.
But they could, Walmart could decide to line them up in parallel to the fence, they could decide to line them up at upright angles to the fence, sticking out the full length into the parking lot. Is that correct?
In theory, yes, but what they have demonstrated to us is that they intend to, you know, park them just like any vehicle would be parked, perpendicular to the edge of the parking area. That's the most efficient way to, to handle these. And in fact, I believe we've got a picture, well, it's, it's at the bottom, covered up by the, the auto text, but that's what they are doing now onsite.
Yes, I've, I've seen that, and I'm, I'm perfectly happy with what, what they're doing, what they're proposing. I would, these are just clarifying questions for myself to better understand. And the, the, I see that our public works director has left the meeting, but I did have a question for him, which is, if, if anyone here knows what a non-structural best management practice might be, would be glad to hear that, but they, that's, that's, that's a minor point. And on this application, we have Exhibit B in our package that is, has, contains the project narrative.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that is, there are some ancillary documents that are submitted along with that, but basically, this is the meat and potatoes of the application and what, what the applicant is requesting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. Moving forward. And are there discussions within the city council? If not, I'd, I'd ask for a motion and a second.
Mayor Troutman, I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 5, Series of 2024, approving a special review use regarding permanent outdoor storage use in the G.C. District.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Patrick. So we're going to move on to D, Introduction and Adoption by Title Only of Resolution 6, Series 2024, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Special Review Use Regarding a Motel Use in the General Commercial G.C. District." I now open the public hearing, and Patrick, I suppose we'll take it from here. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know you're eager to get rid of me, so I'll, I'll get this, through this as quickly as possible, so. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this evening, we are here to consider a request by the prospective purchasers of the property at 212 South Fifth Street for approval to locate a motel within the G.C. General Commercial Zone District. Under the city's land use code in the G.C. Zone District, this is considered a special review use. The subject property is located at the southerly end of South Fifth Street, adjacent to the railroad right-of-way. It is surrounded by non-residential zoning on all sides, from CB Central Business District to the north, to the G.C. General Commercial District to the west and east, and I Industrial to the south. The property was part of the original incorporation of Canyon City in 1872, although subsequently subdivided. The existing building onsite, according to, whoops, according to the assessor records, dates from 1934. It was formerly the publication location of the Canyon City shopper and had an attached caretaker residence. It is currently unoccupied. Within the G.C. General Commercial Zone District, motel is classified as a special review use. Special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 of the UDC as a type of discretionary use under zoning, in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding land uses, and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these, these conflicts, or if the conflicts are too significant, the use can be denied as part of a public hearing. The definition section of the city's Unified Development Code in Section 1713140 describes motel as a building or group of buildings, with or without kitchenette facilities. They therefore offer fewer amenities and services onsite than do hotels. As such, they tend to be automobile-dominated uses, and it is the impact of these, that they tend to have trips generated by the use that triggers the additional scrutiny of a special review use. The applicant's proposal is to convert the existing building into a motel consisting of two guest units. This significantly reduces the number of trips generated over a multi-unit motel. Now, the analysis for any special review use is found in Section 1710-030B of the Unified Development Code and includes three criteria: Compliance generally with the requirements of Chapter 1710, consistency with the purposes of the Unified Development Code, and that the use can be found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area where the use is to be situated. Section 3 of staff's report summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of each of these criteria. Only two units in a motel may seem unusual. The city's definition of motel does not contain a minimum number of guest units to qualify as a motel. Consequently, with only two guest units, traffic generation is minimized, and there is sufficient parking onsite to accommodate this use. Also, having a population of short-term rental residents at this location can, can potentially benefit surrounding retail, restaurant, and gas station-related uses. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses, and this proposal can be considered for approval at this location. So with that, as of the 22nd of January 2024, staff has received no phone, email, or, or phone calls concerning this proposal. Public notice requirements concerning the public hearing before Planning Commission and the City Council have been met in the timeframe required by the UDC. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission, following a public hearing on this request, cited the following findings of fact as, sort of the findings of fact. cited the following findings of fact as, sort of the findings of fact in the staff report as the city's jurisdiction to act on this use by special review for a motel as the principal use of the property at 212 South Fifth Street. And, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the use by special review request to allow a motel as the principal use of the property at 212 South Fifth Street with the adoption of Resolution Six, Series of 2024. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is Tony Greer, the broker who is in the process of selling it to the prospective buyers.
Mr. Greer, were you, I thought that was you sitting there. Would you like, what?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purchasers of this property appreciate your consideration this evening, and I don't really have a presentation, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions of the council for Mr. Greer? Emily?
Mr. Mayor, I think my question might be primarily for staff, and that is, I understand that, and it's probably a good thing in many ways, that our code does not specify a minimum number of units for a motel. But I wondered if there was any other kind of, anything else that would have been allowed in the G C, the General Commercial District, that would allow for short-term rental? Or is really this classification the only one?
This is classificational. The G C General Commercial would also allow a single-family residence as a special review use in the G C. The, I don't believe the applicant pursued that precisely because that's one residence and they wanted to have two. So, the motel was the path of least resistance to get that accomplished.
And I assume then part of that was the interest in the short-term rental
Yes.
aspect that a motel brings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But first, I do have a question, but, but first I want to preface it by saying, giving my thanks to Director Mulready. This is, you know, I think we get spoiled sometimes by the depth and breadth and professionalism of your presentations to us containing the information that is germane to us making our decision, and thank you. Thank you for that. My question is a simple one. Are the, are the four pictures in the right, or pictures, I'll call them, on the screen right now, are those actually picture photographs? Or are those artist representations?
I believe those are photographs of the actual interior space. And in your packet, there are significantly more of these.
Yes.
The two spaces that exist right now, one is the old caretaker residence, the other is the old printer's room. And I believe the intention is to convert the printer's room into a residence as well. So it will look different than what it looks like in the pictures in your packet.
Thank you. And one further question. Were there any concerns expressed at the Planning Commission hearing? And how were they resolved?
There were no members of the public that got up to speak either for or against this particular proposal. Planning Commission was satisfied and forwarded the recommendation you had before you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And ask for any discussion and/or a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution Six, Series of 2024.
Second. May I second it? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay, the next item of discussion is the Royal Gorge Bridge Q and A. Are we still going to do that?
We are not. The, the representatives from the Royal Gorge Bridge Company send their regrets. They had a health emergency and they, they have provided their annual audit reports, independent audits, and we will get that disseminated to council. But they do send their regrets.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. And then, we're going to talk about career development, and I see that's why Chief Schick is up here. Is that important to you? I mean, I'm just kidding you. So, it's a matter, I understand, I read through it, I absolutely agree with you. And should we have Chief Schick or Ryan? Would you, go ahead, Chief, go ahead.
Chief, just make sure your microphone's on, please.
It is a matter of great significance, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for being patient and staying with us this evening. I'm bringing up the rear, so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Thank you for staying. Of course, this is overtime, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I just, just wondered. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, this evening, the, the P D is bringing forward a matter that's been on our, on our plate now for about two years. The first time we presented council with a overview of our career development plan was in 2022, and it has taken some time to work out all the kinks and, and get this process to where we are tonight. Originally, we budgeted this matter in this year's budget. We, we budgeted it at, as a, a slow roll implementation as opposed to what we're bringing to you tonight. And there are some extenuating circumstances that have certainly pushed us in those, those, that direction. Just for posterity, we will run through just the broad strokes of career development plan for those that haven't heard it yet. And I'll be glad to go as deep and as wide as you, you need us to go tonight to talk about this because it is an absolute critical juncture for us as we continue to expand our capacity within the P D, build on our culture and climate as we develop professional police officers. It's defined as a, the career development path can be defined as a path for staff development rewarding employees for personal and professional contributions and achievements toward the organization and customers. It is based in whole or in part on the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act, on, based on employee achievements who have equal opportunity. It's also in line with the city's Balanced Scorecard Initiative, and it is absolutely in line with our service excellence motto. And it contributes to the P D's pursuits of 21st century policing, the pillars therein. It is very important in terms of recruitment and retention. With regards to recruit, recruitment, prospective employees want employers to have preferably an established and structured path for meaningful growth and advancement. And the interest, interested in what their future with the organization is going to look like, and I do apologize, it's not advancing. Okay, there we go. Retention, professional and invested organizations have less struggles with employee retention. Recent history, CCPD has had some significant challenges in, with staff retention, but we have spent the last three years overcoming that. And we have had great success in that capacity. As originally presented in 2022, the C D P intended to enhance personal, personnel capacity, retention, and recruitment. And as I mentioned earlier, during the 2023 budget process, it was decided we would implement it by phasing in eligible employees over a period of time. Current regional hiring trends of our most competitive agencies have strongly suggested that we fully implement this matter now. I've had an opportunity and spoke with all the chiefs and sheriffs in our, in our region and, in full comparison of beginning and tenured officer pay rates and benefits of Pueblo P D, Florence P D, Salida, Buena Vista, Colorado Springs, Fair Play, Fountain, and Fremont, and Chafee, and Pueblo County Sheriff's Offices. After receiving the information and reviewing it with City Administrator Stevens, it became very apparent that we needed to act more swiftly and not less swiftly to remain competitive and retain our quality personnel and recruit high, high-quality personnel as well. When we look at the pay rates here, notice Canyon City at the top are, are beginning entry level salary, 25.58, and our P O two is around 27.06 an hour. And we are competitive with those in the gray, Custer County, Fremont County, and Florence P D. And as, as we get into the P O two range, we start losing some of that competitiveness. So, as we look to transition into the C D P, and I think it was in your council packets, you saw a redacted budget that talked about what this extra money would go towards. A little more than half, I believe it was, within the C D P of our staff will be in these very highly competitive ranges, making us competitive with Pueblo P D, Colorado Springs, Fountain, Chafee, Chafee County Sheriff's Office, Salida, Pueblo County, and Buena Vista. And these are traditionally organizations that we've had a very hard time competing with. The C D P, not only is it about pay increase, it's, it's, it's part and parcel to where we've come over the last three years in terms of raising the accountability with our staff and delivering a much higher level of service to our community. Those pays are certainly commensurate with the extra effort and duties that they're assuming through the C D P as we continue to look to expand that capacity, raise our accountability, and deliver a much higher level of service as a policing organization. Again, the C D P is described as a vehicle for enhancing personal, professional, and organizational excellence. And of course, our byproduct is service excellence to our community. Our mantra is the city's mantra. It's a path for, of inspiration and motivation for the team. Key here, as we look to develop the professional policing organization, is filling and adding depth to that bench and, and developing subject matter experts. This, this is critical. The C D P also contributes to avoiding the retired-on-duty syndrome, which, if you've been in government work long enough, it's almost contagious at times. But this encourages and inspires everybody to carry their fair share of water and, and work towards a common good. And of course, engage in contributing to the service, service excellence of our community. Again, going back to recruitment, today's applicants want to understand and see what their opportunities are for advancement. I can give my, my stump speech every time I talk to a new cadet and tell them about all the wonderful things we, we are doing, but when they see it in black and white and they see a pay structure committed or commensurate to that output of, of level, that level of output of, of product, it gives them confidence in the organization they're, they're looking to join. Professional policing organizations have fewer challenges with meeting industry best practice and standards and maintaining strong teams when those things are in place. A roadmap, they, they, particularly our younger folks, want to see a roadmap for both personal and organizational success and opportunity to grow with the team in a common direction. U C Berkeley, People and Culture reports that career development increases employee motivation and productivity. Attention to career development helps you to attract top staff and retain valued employees. Supporting, supporting, excuse me, career development and growth of employees is mandated by the philosophy of human resources management. I can go on about the, the benefits here with regards to, I've got to learn to keep this up with what I'm doing here. I would, I would ask council at this point, because I'm now, I'm becoming redundant, but is there, are there any questions with regards to career development that you don't understand or would like more of an explanation about? Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from, from council? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman, and thank you, Chief Schick. Thank you so much for the work that you've done to create this career development plan. As you noted, I think it's an incredibly important tool to ensure that our personnel are appropriately compensated and recognized for contributing to service excellence and also see that clear path forward for career progression and growth. I do have two, and thank you as well for answering the many detailed questions that I had about this plan. I do still have two. One, I had noted on an earlier chart that you had mentioned or referenced steps. I think we would no longer, or we would not have steps within this plan. It would simply be the, the levels that you have articulated.
Yes, ma'am, maybe the proficiency criteria outlined within the C D P.
And I was pleased to see how robust those were, both in terms of the qualifications required, the levels required in the evaluations, et cetera. My, my question really comes down to finances, and this may be a more appropriate question for Administrator Stevens or Director Nordike. But I understand that the total anticipated cost of this program in 2024 is a little over a hundred thousand. I think it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
Sixty-two, yes, yes, ma'am.
And that's only the anticipated cost for 2024. Obviously, that cost will likely increase in the out-years as, as our very valued folks continue to move up in their career progression. I think it's incumbent upon us to have a sense of what those out-year costs look like. So I'm hoping that we do have some information as to what, what the projected cost increases would be in the out-years because I think otherwise I would hate to see us put in place a career development plan, give folks this sense of where they're going and what they can accomplish, only to find out in the out-years it's simply not fiscally sustainable. So, any further information on out-year costs, Administrator Stevens?
Yeah, I think, and I think Chief had, had mentioned this in an email, but, you know, it's hard to really put a hard, a hard number on, on that because as we do recruit new employees, you know, those numbers are changing. We do see a lot of transfers or promotions and things like that. I don't have, you know, a specific number if you're looking for five years out, what that would look like at this point. We do have the, you know, if you bring in experienced officers and those types of things, you know, that changes the dynamic as well. You know, as, you know, as part of this program, the Police Department will be assessing that on an annual basis as we're preparing for the budget and providing that information to us as we, as we move through the budget process.
And if I may, Councilwoman, I, I can only speak to my experience and my prior experience with very similar program over a twenty-year period. That number, as City Administrator Stevens indicated, we will project that each year going into our budget considerations. But as people come up within the C D P, we also see people coming out for a variety of reasons. They may be retiring. This program does not transcend to the supervisory role. It, this is built to give our line-level folks pay that's commensurate with their output that they can make a livable wage on and remain consistent in that role and become that subject matter expert. But I think it's important to remember that people promote out, people retire, people leave, and as those, those vacancies, so as we see folks ascending, we also see folks, and generally speaking, when we, especially when we start looking at promotional opportunities, those top-tier candidates are being pulled out of our master officer level. Now, not all of them, obviously, but I think it's, it's ebb and flow in terms of. So, I think it's fair to argue, or at least suggest, that this initial buy-in is, is more likely to be our, our most robust year because we're never going to bring the rest of that department up into the master level that quickly. So as they're, you know, it's, it's a matter of attrition. So as, as others come forward, some are coming out. And that's just been my experience.
Thank you. It's really helpful to hear, hear what your experience was when you managed a similar program in Virginia. Thank you.
Mr. Hemrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a, a specific question, Chief. On the procedure itself, under the police officer-to-officer first-class uniform patrol in advanced training requirements, it says, let's see, am I quoting in the right place here? Yes, other advanced classes totaling twenty hours advanced training. So if you're in that slot and you complete the twenty hours, that's, that's a one-time requirement, and then the requirement, once it's met, it never has to, you, that's not per year or every other year or something like that.
No, sir. Once you, once you obtain that training, that's sufficient for that rank or that- or that proficiency level. But it also incorporates other duties, like being part of the training cadre within the Police Department, again, expanding that capacity. But it is designed to inspire people to become more proficient in their craft and develop those specialties. So, one of our focuses this year, as we, you all know that Commander Sabatino was recently promoted. He was previously our Training Sergeant. We're getting ready to assess for a new Training Sergeant. Their focus this year will be identifying specific tracks for people to pursue becoming a subject matter expert. So they will absolutely exhaust those number of hours, probably expand on that. But we will start developing subject matter experts in everything from use of force to domestic violence investigation, traffic accident investigation, right on down the line. So, those are what those training hours are encouraged, are put there to encourage people to do.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. That sounds like your new Training Officer is almost going to be writing the college catalog of courses for various degrees.
He's going to be busy here, yeah.
Any questions of council? Then I would like to call for a motion and a second. Not like to, I'm asking for, okay, be nice about this. I'd like a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Hamrick?
I move that we approve the Career Development Plan with proposed budget amendments to be presented later with the first quarter budget amendments.
I second.
Made in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy, oops, sorry. Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all. Any other comments for the good? If not, we're going to adjourn.